Thanks for coming, everybody, tonight. We'll start the meeting with the pledge.
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start with the approval of the agenda. I've got a couple of things here, but Dan, anything you've got?
I have nothing.
Changes, Dwayne?
Nothing to add.
Ryan?
Nope.
I had just the one thing that I had emailed you about. I'd like to add to old business discussion of the library repair construction.
The punch list?
Yes.
So, that was one of G3, library punch list, to add to old business number three, library punch list. Anything else? Okay, then we've got, we'll add J1, under the engineers' report for project updates. And then I'm gonna make a change as far as moving up here for somebody who's here to speak tonight. We're gonna move that Hayes water dispute from the old business up to the mayor's report so we can get that to the beginning of the meeting. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Make the motion.
Thanks, Ryan. Do I have a second?
Do I have a second?
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda? Any questions for administration on the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve.
Thanks, Dwayne. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
You all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Visitors of council, Liz, do you wanna come up and address the things? Or you just want me to kinda summarize the two of them?
Either one.
Okay, you're here for questions that we need it? Okay, so there's two things out there, and I've had conversations throughout the last week, and so has Tim and Linda, and everybody else probably at City Hall.
The American League has run into a situation with temporary liquor license permits on October 8th and 15th. They've had requests from larger groups that wanna come in and they wanna be able to block the street off, which moves some of their liquor license to the street. Problem is with the state law, it says you can only have one every 30 days. So, basically, there's really nothing we can do about it as far as the state goes. The only thing that's in there would be is if one of them's a city festival. I'm just gonna give my opinion that one on the 8th is for the fire department, but it's not the fire department, it's the Fire Relief Association, which is not a city entity. So I think we'd have a really hard time making a stretch to say that that's a city festival. So, and I know I've talked to the lead, and I'm helping on the committee for the one that's on the 15th for a cancer benefit, and I think the resolution last night, they're just gonna keep on the property on the 15th. So, just wanted to bring it up to see if there was a way, but I personally don't think there's a way unless, I mean, it's not a city entity, so. The other one is a special event, that's October 2nd, and that's the date that the Vikings are playing football in Great Britain. So, there's an 8:00 AM football game on Sunday morning, and our liquor ordinance says that you can't serve alcohol on Sunday before 11:00 AM. So, unless our attorney says there's a way where you can give a variance to an ordinance, which I don't believe that's a possibility.
Looked into that, but off the top of my head, I wouldn't think that...
I mean, we talked about, I mean, the city council can change the ordinance, but it wouldn't be timely for this event.
Right.
So, I mean, if you chose in the future to say, "8 o'clock is fine on Sundays," when the ordinance was passed, the council chose 11:00 AM on Sundays for serving. So, that's kinda the issue we run into, is...
We don't think we have time to change an ordinance between now and October 2nd, because we have to have a public hearing and...
I mean, it has to be published.
Right. So, unfortunately, is that's just, you know, I think you already knew that, but just, but I think the second one is, is that maybe we should add to our list for our ordinances that we could amend that, because there are special events, you know. We have 8:00 AM on it all the other days. We could just make it the same for the, this is the first time since that ordinance has been in existence that there's even been a request. So, it's kinda, it's not something that will be done all the time, so.
Would you like us to add that to the agenda for a future meeting?
I would, yes.
Linda, would you make sure we add that to the agenda for the first meeting in October?
Anybody else have anything to add? Other than that, Liz, that's all we can do or not do. So, okay? Thank you. Onto the mayor's report. So I moved the Hayes water dispute up to the mayor's report. Staff has been working on that, and I'm gonna have a recommendation here, just based on the facts and circumstances that we have. The city policy normally is that we have these disputes with water going through a meter, we waive the sewer, but we charge for the water. I think in this situation, as we look through, the homeowner has gone to an expense to bring plumbers and people in to try to figure out where the water went. And we changed the meter out, which the department should've done, so we can't really prove that that meter was functioning properly when it was on the house. I mean, I'm just looking at this for what it is. So my recommendation is that we just use the average usage, I think it's around 10,000 gallons, and waive the 70,000 that are over that. Because really, I mean, putting myself in the shoes of the homeowner, if I've gone through the expense already, and we really can't say, even though that meter is functional now at the shop, when it was on the house, how do we know it was really functional? So, that's my recommendation of the council. Any discussion? You guys have any questions, and then we can have the homeowner come up and speak if you'd like to.
I do have a question.
Yep.
How is the new meter? You were gonna check in, is it...
Yeah, we haven't noticed any issues with the new meter.
Okay.
So, it's back to normal?
So, it's back to, I was just curious, you know, if that would've been high, too, then it could've been something.
Yep.
And this is one of the new meters that transmits the data, so if there is a problem...
It's an ultrasonic meter, yep. It'll be read by tablets, that's right.
Okay, so we would know pretty quickly going, that's why we decided to switch to those, right?
Yeah, on a regular basis, we can run those remotely, as opposed to having someone physically go to the meter typically and go check. Dave has been checking on this one in person, just to make sure, because sometimes we do run the issues with the ultrasonics, but, yeah, that's the goal for all those, eventually to be able to just have Cassie run them at any time during the month, instead of having that, you know, historically, people have just gone out twice a month, or maybe twice a month and looked, so.
Okay, before I take a motion on that, Mr. Hayes, you had a card. If you wanna come up and speak, you certainly can.
You go everywhere with me. From the start of this process, my family has felt like delinquent wasteful people. From the first phone call through City Hall, where I was told that you will pay your $1,424.50 bill, or you will shut your water off, to multiple times I've been told, 92,000 gallons of water went through your meter, so you'll pay for it. To the first time, the city water specialists came to my house and told me, "My meter is working fine," and I quote, "Water meters never break." To calling the city minister last Tuesday to set up a time meet in person to discuss our water usage, with his response being email stating, "I am unavailable." On the 15th, however, my expectation is for a resolution of this issue by the city council at the 14th meeting anyways. Secondly, I've been told that four to five times a month, someone has a high water usage. If this does happen to people, my hope is that others will treat it better than we were to solve this problem. Because people may not have the means to just pay off the bill. We are fortunate through saving, good financial choices, and my wife working her tail off to provide for us that we could pay off if we had to. However, there are others who do not have the resources, whether it be time, money, or dollars, to fight this issue. For those, it could be the choice between putting food on the table or keeping the lights on. They can be placed in a position where they may have to make up this money, and not the best of race. With that said, I was deployed in Afghanistan 10 years ago. I saw people living in mud huts, people who were thankful that they got a bottle of warm, disgusting water from a stranger from America. People who had nowhere near the freedoms and opportunities we had in this country. What I'm trying to say is that I'm thankful that we have choices, and that we have the opportunity to solve this problem peacefully in this ability. Lastly, my suggestion to the city council is that if this situation occurs to someone else, we use an investigative, caring, and common sense mindset to get to the root of the problem. And let's tell the person the usage is high in a non-threatening way, change the meter out immediately, and allow the resident having to go all the way to do so, and keep an eye on the meter readings, and be in full, honest communication with the resident. My expectation in this matter is that we will bill at the normal usage, but we are compensated in any form for the plumber services to call to prove our innocence. And our normal usage is four to five thousand normally. There has been a couple of 10,000 on there, and that is when we fill the pool in June, which is 6,400 gallons of water. You'll see that in June of '20, you'll see that in June of '21 as well. As far as July of what we have now, of '22, I have no idea why it's 10,000. That would've been a month prior to what we're discussing. With that said, I have two questions. Why are our meter readings rounded to the thousand mark? I'm not an expert on this, but now reading my meter many times, there seems to be, I left today, it was at 3,078. But every month, we sit at four or five. My question is, is the city rounding up or down? And other than that?
As far as the questions go, I have no idea. I'll have to have somebody get back to Dave, I'll have Dave get back to you on the meter and the rounding and the thousands, because I have no idea.
Yeah. But as far as the other stuff, we'll discuss that, and I'll have, we'll be directing staff to work with you to come to a resolution on that, but we'll come to that. And I appreciate your feedback.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, so as far as what we're talking about, as far as waiving that, so I would like to make a motion to direct Tim and Cassie to come up with the average usage and waive the amount over that, looking at past years, past whatever it would be, and then come up with that number and waive anything over that for the water, because the sewer's already been taken care of, correct?
The current month sewer has been, that's correct.
But any additional sewer, same. So, I'll entertain a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, and thanks for your feedback. Appreciate it.
Do you know what the fire department still fills pools?
For a fee?
Yep. Saves you on sewer fees. I was an option. No, we did in the past, but I don't know if we still did.
Yeah.
Saves on those sewer fees to have the fire department fill it.
Secondary meter would be another option, too.
Yep, secondary meter.
Dan, you've got a secondary meter.
I do have a secondary meter, yes.
Okay. All right, thanks, everybody. I didn't have any other cards, so on to committee reports. Planning Commission, first one is Quick Trip preliminary and final plat, development agreement and petition and waiver. Oh, I'm sorry.
We've got an easement vacation.
That's all, I thought it was all together. Okay, so E1, the easement vacation for Quick Trip. Waiting for this to open.
Basically, what it is, is that there's a current easement that goes through these parcels in order to allow for fiber optic and electrical cables. The folks at KMTL are removing their connection, so we're able to vacate it, and we're also adjusting where the electric's gonna be hooking in to the property, so it's not longer required. It'll allow them to construct the building over the top of it and pave that parking lot, so.
And I will open the public hearing. If there's anybody here who has anything to say or comments or for us on the easement vacation. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions by council for administration? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Just had a couple of questions.
Oops, I'm sorry.
And it's only, it's performed on the actual resolution itself that's in the packet. And this may have been addressed at the last meeting, which I was not at, but it says, "Whereas four fifths of all members of the council concur." And then it also has an effective date of February 24th, 2016. And I was just wondering why.
That's obviously a mistake, the date would be. So that will be corrected to today's date.
And then can you just strike the whereas unless only four fifths do? It's...
Well, at least four fifths have to...
Okay, so it should say, okay.
Prove this.
Okay, that's where I was confused as to why that was, okay.
Four fifths, four or five have so.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion with the correct date.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Thanks, Dan, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Thank you. Now on to committee report, planning commission and quick trip. Thanks, Ian.
We've got a couple items tonight, so we'll go through this quick trip one first. Planning Commission met on Monday night, and they discussed it at length, and they reviewed the items. This is, of course, not a new project to the council. You've seen sort of these designs and these agreements before. Basically, you're looking at the combination of parcels and then plating. One parcel is not platted currently, it's unplatted land, kind of on the western side of the subdivision. You're gonna be taking those three frontage parcels and merging them in. So, you're gonna be looking at development for this new Quick Trip C store. In your package, you've got the resolutions, you've got the request for council action as well. So, I mean, it's relatively straightforward. I don't know from planning commission if you had any other items to discuss there. One item would be the screening component. I don't know if the planning commission members wanted to discuss that all, if they're comfortable. The recommendation from the planning staff is to utilize vegetative screening as opposed to a hard screening. However, you know, obviously, it's up to the council's final decision there. Hard screening would be example, would be like what you've got by Casey's, kind of that white fencing. They felt because of the nature and the transition of the property, it would be better to do a vegetative screening, but we're certainly open to looking at other items. We do have a representative from Quick Trip here tonight, representing them, and certainly he can speak to the project and what their timeframe is and where they're at, kind of.
Okay. Any comments from planning commission? Well, everything was pretty straightforward.
Yep.
Any questions for you guys? Okay. Did you have any comments that you wanted to add to?
No, I don't need to. I guess...
Okay, if you wanted to, I didn't know if you wanted to.
No, I guess in regards to the screening, we can do whatever you guys want, vegetative or hard, doesn't really matter to us. Timing project next summer, and we're pumped about it. So thanks for having us in town again.
All right, glad you're here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution, the preliminary and final plat for Quick Trip, 11/94.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Thanks, Dwayne. Do I have a second?
Do I have a second?
Thanks, Mel. All in favor?
Just one item to note during the conference, the discussion of it. So it is conditioned on approval at a staff level of development agreement and petition and waiver.
Sure.
Just so you're aware, there are a few of those things. I know Brandon's been working on that a little bit, and we've got that copy over to Quick Trip, but once that's approved, then it'll officially take effect, but just wanted to highlight that for the record.
Question on that. That approved at staff level or back through council?
At staff level. We're expecting that to be approved.
So I'll make that motion, amendment to the motion with that contingency.
Okay. Thank you. Second?
Do I have a second?
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, Linda.
Is that the only one, or is there a second one there, too?
All right, next one up. We've got our fearless redevelopment assistant to handle a conditional use request from some folks down here looking for fences. We're right ahead.
Yes, so that property is located at 901 Ninth Street Northwest. Included, I have a staff report, and there's a map of that property as well, just to get a better idea. So what the applicants are proposing is to construct a fence that will go off of the corner of their garage there, down to the south property line, and then west to an existing fence that is already on the property line. And then the west side of the property, there's also an existing fence. So they're proposing to offset a new fence that will extend north up to where that electrical box is, and then it will extend west and then south to join up where the deck meets with their house. The public hearing was conducted at the planning commission meeting on Monday, and they voted to recommend approval of the conditional use permit with four different conditions. That the fence will not encroach beyond the front of the house, that the fence will not exceed six feet in height, and an access agreement will be notarized and recorded with the property owners to the south and west, so that the fence can be placed on the property line, and finally, that the property owner at 901 Ninth Street Northwest acknowledges that the fence is in a utility easement and can be dismantled at owner's expense if the easement is utilized. And we did actually receive the access easement agreements this morning, signed and notarized.
Okay, any questions for you?
Thanks for going through the process. It seems to be working again, and the other property owner has signed, they got that back, so we're ready to go.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Dan, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Dwayne. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Golden Colonel Preliminary Plat.
All right, so this is another project that the council's very familiar with, representative of the owner here tonight as well. Basically, what we're looking at is a sort of a simple, it's a major subdivision, but it's a relatively straightforward one, where they're splitting off a current property, a current home, that's been on the property for some time, and they'd like to parcelize that. It's about an acre and a half of a home, and then another acre and a half they'd like to add in, so it'll be about a three-acre parcel total that's being split off. So what they've done is they've created that, in your packet there, you can see that Zumbro Valley Park subdivision. And what they'd like to do is create the rest of it as an outlaw. There are a number of criteria that we're requiring. Basically, as this develops, they're gonna be required to hook in sewer and water services as this is extended. Additionally, the access is currently off of Highway 34, but based on our understanding from the county engineer, the access will have to change to an internal access. So basically, they'll switch the driveway from one side to the other once the road network is extended there, because the state and the county has certain restrictions on access to major highways like that. So, at a certain point in time in the future, that will have to change as well. So, the other question that the owner had, that the planning and zoning commission discussed briefly on Monday night, was deferring the park dedication fees until a time when this would develop. And at this point, the staff is recommending that we defer those fees as part of this process until that point.
Okay. Any questions on that? You guys have any from planning and zoning?
I did have one more question I'd asked at that planning and zoning. Was there any way we could stay in there when they hook into the sewer and water, that we make sure that they're existing well and septic system are taken out of service?
Yeah, and I think, I don't think that's a problem. Based on my understanding, that'll be worked into the agreement.
Okay. We just, you know, for future, it just makes it easier.
For the record, we'll have that as added as a condition to make sure those are part of the agreement, so.
It just seems common, but just, doesn't hurt to word it.
I don't know. If you wanted to reference anything else, Matt?
You did a great job.
Okay, any other questions? Comments? That, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Golden Colonel Preliminary Plat.
And final.
And final plat.
Make the motion.
Thanks, Ryan. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Onto 2022 tax levy collectible in '23 and 2023 budget, so we should have some discussion on this first, then we'll open it up for community input. I had a chance to sit down with Tim last week and go through some stuff after going through the budget over time, so you see that the preliminary budget is lower than what was there in August. That's just a recommendation on my part. I mean, just some examples of the things that are there. No services were cut, no employees were cut, no programs were cut, but we've got places in the budget where, an example is, for utilities at the aquatic center, we've budgeted $65,000, $57,000, $55,000, and we've never spent over $33,000. So there's $20,000 we can cut off, the $55,000 was budgeted. So I went through and found multiple places like that. A few things with capital, $40,000 for the Christmas lights. I don't think we need to budget for that. We have a liquor store with reserves, we have an electric department, this would fall under as well, so if we do pay for some or all of that, we've got other sources for that, so there's another $40,000. Other things were, a couple things on the other capital things. The outfield fence on field number one, it could use some repairs, but does it have to be replaced this year? No, it's still got plenty of life left. There's a lot of little nickel and dime things like that, and adding in the fire department. So when it came to that, and we have reserves, and one of the things I was looking at is our stabilization fund. So what I asked Tim was on, you know, December 1st, before we approved the final budget, like to get some kind of report, because most of our bills are in and paid for. We know what they are, so we'll know what we'll have for those things that we budgeted that didn't get spent, and we should really know what that number is before we approve the final, instead of it just going into a slush, and then we use it for something later. Because some of these, you know, those utilities, we've budgeted that higher number for several years, and we've spent less than half or half of that. Well, that's just, it's great, but we should be on a budget, not having that fluff or whatever in there. And we do have reserves, so my recommendation's gonna be, and we'll have community input, because I think before it was up at, I don't have that right here in front of me.
I think we were on 7%.
It was 7% or 8%, but that didn't include the fire hall, so we had to add 2.7% for that, so it'd be up about 10 and a half to 11. And with the cuts or the things that I redlined out there, as a proposal for you guys, it's up to the council as a whole, it gets it down to, as my computer now is being slow...
About 4%?
About 4%. About 4%. And that includes the fire hall. And we still have reserves, and again, and in one of the areas that we all, that I also had done, that I asked questions about, and I think Tim and I agreed on, in the fire, oh, I'm sorry, the fire, the police department, we had a full-time person, but we also, the budget included increased over, budgeted overtime of $45,000. Well, if we have an increase of one FTE, the challenge to the fire chief, oh, sorry, the police chief, is that, hey, you have the extra full-time person, do your schedule accordingly. We don't need to budget for $45,000 of overtime, which we haven't spent before. Overtime's gonna happen when it's an emergency. And with emergencies, then we have reserves that we, we don't need to budget 45. So it was pretty easy to come up with $200,000 to $300,000 of the stuff that we have reserves for to get that number down there. And personally, I think we owe it to the taxpayers to really sharpen our pencils this year, because they don't get to go to their boss and tell him that they need eight or nine, 10% more. And we're asking people to vote on a fire hall, which needs to be done, in our opinion, and a lot of people's opinion, but it is extra. You know, we could make do. So, if we can keep it down to that number, under 4% or 5%, including the fire hall, I think that's a lot more tolerable for people to approve that type of a project, possibly. It's up to them. So that's kinda where I was at when I talked with Tim last week. I know he talked me off the ledge off a few things that I, I was coming in with like, you know, 10% less, so. But there were some things I didn't think of when we were, when I was going through my redline, because I had it down to about an 18% decrease, but Nancy...
One of those, just to note, one of those is the street fund reserve, so we do budget for that. And one thing that we're planning on is looking at resurfacing behind ShopCo, because we know that that road area is gonna be damaged, especially next year, because all the traffic's gonna shun through there. And it's not a project that's highly accessible. You've got three houses, and then you've got two businesses, one of which already is in a TIF district, so they already are not always enthusiastic about their tax burden. So that is a project we know that we'll be utilizing probably general funds to kind of repave that. So, but I appreciate it. It was a good conversation, and I think, you know, Nancy has been very involved with this as well, and I appreciate her. and I appreciate her, um, you know, one thing that she's got on your desk today is this upgrade of our general debt, our general obligation is, is being upgraded, and part of it is because of the strong budget management that she's seen over the last few years. Um, and she's been really integral in that. So, um, I think, you know, I can echo with the mayor's, I think we definitely want to try and do what we can. The biggest concern for us, of course, is those, those kind of known unknowns. Healthcare, we do have it slated at twenty percent right now, we're hoping that it's less than that. But that's one of those things where, you know, we don't know that yet. But we do think there's still a little bit of flex in this budget. A lot of it will depend on, you know, what happens in November with that, with that, you know, that referendum. So definitely a question there. Um, but I did email this out to you, so the, the budget and brief that the mayor's talking about is that, um, the, the one I sent out to you is, it would be, um, two, two point five eight four six twenty-four million for the general, um, four twenty-three zero seventeen for the library, um, economic development would be eighty-nine thousand five sixty, and then you've got the other debt service, uh, funds in there as well. So it's relatively straightforward. I don't know frankly that it'll flex a lot more from there for our final. But, you know, um, I think I'm comfortable where the budget is at right now. You know, the tennis courts, I mean, that would be a nice one, but we might have to work that in over a couple of years, you know.
So you're not worried about the, the big unknown being energy costs? And I know one of the things you said was reducing some of the energy expenditure estimates at the Aquatic Center.
Yep, so, right, so...
Just want to make sure that...
The budget that, when I, when I told Tim I wanted to cut that number, it's still higher than it was previous years.
Okay.
So, yeah, same thing with motor fuels, because I think when we first put this together in July, who knows, we're already on twenty-six percent motor fuels, so we took a few thousand off of those department for motor fuels, just because those prices are down. Yeah, but still an increase over the prior year for energy.
Well, and some of those, that's why we have reserves too. I mean, you know, I talked to Charlie about with snow plowing and things like that, I mean, we're going to snow plow. You know, and if that means that we go over budget, you know, we want to try and plan for it, but, you know, we don't know what that number's going to be. If it's a bad year, we could go over, if it's a good year, last year we were a little under budget for that. So, um, obviously, over the next twelve months, we're going to know more about the long-term prognosis on fuel cost. You know, it spiked so fast, now it's kind of dropped off. I'm not as concerned about it, but it's definitely something that we're going to keep in mind.
Okay, any other comments, Nancy?
Well, I'd only remind you, you know, whatever council's wishes are for this, um, the only stipulation is that at the December levy, you can only go down, you can't go up. And I think that's sometimes why we hedge our bets a little more. But, um, you know, Chris certainly seems like he's targeted a lot, that, you know, we may have, you know, we could put some department hits for their budgets for a lot of this.
Yeah, that's like Tim said, we still have some leeway in there that we could have taken more, I think, off. So we do have that leeway in case, you know, and, you know, let's just face it, if, if we're setting our budget, we don't want to shortchange ourselves for the long term, right? Because you can't just budget for one year, you, you have, you have to have a three, five, ten-year vision of what you're doing for capital improvements and whatever it might be. Um, but on the other hand, we still do have some leeway, so we're already higher than what we could be. And we could sharpen it right down to, but, you know, so we're already higher, so we do have that percent, percent and a half, two percent leeway on, overall. But also if something happens in November and it comes in four percent higher, well, then we have to do what everybody else does. We have to figure out how I'm going to save two percent. So that's kind of, we still have the leeway, because we don't know some of those things. But we're still putting a cap on ourselves to say, hey, we have to fit within our budget versus, well, we'll just set it at fifteen and that way we can always go higher, because, you know, no, we, we tighten our belts like everybody else and, and budget. So I, I think staff's done a great job with the budget, you've done exactly what you were supposed to do. And then us as a council with feedback from the community, which I've had a little. You know, I think if we, but we do have that leeway in there, but you're right. So whatever we set tonight, we can't go over. And I think everybody's fully aware of that, right?
When I, when you mentioned the long-term, one, three, five-year plan, when we had Mike Bubani come in, are his projections on our, our general fund, are those based on the numbers that we have now? If we're putting fifty thousand into a water fund for electric and then we take some of that out, is that going to impact some of his numbers looking, short-term, long-term? Will that have a...
No, no, that doesn't, yeah, that kind of a separate...
I was trying to understand that part.
And part of the thing with the levy too, which is tough, when I first came in, it was difficult. I came in, I remember the first year I was elected, I came in and talked with Nancy, I said, well, jeez, we could, you know, cut that, do that, you know, to improve the levy or use some of the reserves. Well, electric, sewer, water, those are all enterprise funds, those are not here. It's not part of the levy. It's part of our budget, you know, those are budgeting, we keep those under control. But those are enterprise funds that the electric rates pay for the electric department, we don't levy for the electric department. So it's, so those numbers won't hit the same spreadsheet.
That's fine.
Yeah, no, good question though.
Clarification for me, thank you.
Anything else before we open it up for public input? Okay, we'll open it up for public input, if anybody has anything that they'd like to share with the council, just come on up, state your name and address, and let us know what you think.
Good evening, my name's Johan Marsland, I run the Trained Child Center at two oh five Manorville Avenue. I also live at seven oh three South Workplace here in Cassin. Uh, Mr. Mayor, council members, I would appreciate, uh, I appreciate already the efforts you've made to minimize the budget increase. Uh, as a pastor here in town, I deal with many families on the lower end of the income. We also have a, a recovery ministry that deals with some of the most destitute members of our community. And with the inflationary pressures that they have been experiencing, uh, we need to keep, uh, all property tax increases to a minimum to help our families. So thank you for your efforts so far, I appreciate the consideration that you've given.
Thanks Johan. Anybody else? Okay, we'll close public input. Um, anything else from the council? Comments, questions, suggestions?
Well, I appreciate the efforts that's been put into it. From the onset, my target was in that four or five percent range. We've, we've obtained that with the, um, red lines that our mayor has suggested. So I'm definitely confident, comfortable setting that limit at this time.
Okay, any males?
My only question is if we, when we go in November, if we see a resounding no on the fire department, what's our plan?
Means no?
No, just like in general, if we budgeted that, what's our plan?
That two point seven comes off. Yep, yeah, so if we're at four right now and, and they, the people say no, then whatever we had budgeted for that amount would come off unless we have something else. But I can't imagine, one second, I can't imagine if the people come and say no. It'd be just like if they said yes, and then we said, no, we don't want to build it. No, if the people say yes, we asked them, we have to do what they ask us to do. If they say no, that means something won't happen with the fire hall in the future. But it probably won't happen right away, because we'd have to go back to the drawing board and figure out what can we do and what do the people want. So I'm not saying we wouldn't ever do anything with the fire department, but if they say no, then my, that's my opinion on one vote. So you guys, you folks can overrule me any moment you want to overrule me. But, um, if, if, it's just like when the people said no to the old school back in two thousand and four, when I was at a chamber meeting and somebody said, what's it really mean when the people said no? And I said, I was always taught that no meant no, every situation, no meant no. So that, that just gives us another challenge, if that happens, we got to go back to the drawing board to figure out what it is the people want to support.
Support, yeah.
Not that, doesn't need to be done, we think it needs to be done, but that's up to the people with seven million dollars, so. Is that fair enough answer?
Oh, makes sense, yeah.
You had, spin put on that beside center?
No, I think that's the right answer with fire hall. I mean, I, I think we'll continue to work to try to fine tune, um, you know, maybe to find a project in the future that the council's more comfortable with. We know that we have baseline revenue that's coming from other sources that would provide a certain amount of project. But, I mean, I think that the mayor's right, that obviously we'd have to go back to the drawing board and EMS would have to take a look at that as a committee and sort of re-figure kind of where they're at, if, if that were to fail, so.
Okay, good question, yeah, that's, you know, we'll cross that bridge in November when we get to it, so. All right, with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the preliminary budget, uh, levy and budget.
Got that preliminary budget up here for your, for your, I know the resolution there might not match up exactly, but these will be the numbers that we'll be approving as part of the, the budget.
Okay. Thank you, I'll entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Thanks Dan, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you. And thanks Nancy, Tim, all the department heads, everybody. Say, oh, I know it's not easy, because you go out to the department heads for the budget and it comes back and you're like, huh, okay. And then you whittle it away and then you get it to us, then we whittle some more. And I think we're all on the same page and the same team, so thank you.
Well, I'll make it work, I'll just say that, um, I will update these numbers and use it in the resolution as per your approval. But just so you can see it, I'll include it in correspondence next month, or next week's, or next time's package.
Perfect, thank you very much, thanks Nancy for your work on that. Um, the library punch lists.
So we had our, uh, library board meeting last night, and, uh, we, we have been working with ICS and the subcontractor that ICS recommended to do some repair work on the library. And, um, as you can see on the email and the punch list here that was prepared by ICS, um, several things remain undone. And the library board has some concerns that the subcontractor chosen by ICS, um, will not return to finish that work. So I told the other board members that I would ask council what our plan is, and I do know that ICS has held back about twenty thousand dollars. What is the plan should the subcontractor not come back and finish this job, other than...
Isn't it ICS's responsibility to finish the project? So if they can't get their sub to come back, then they have to figure it out and either do it or get a different sub? We've already paid for it.
Yeah, that was my understanding or my recollection from our discussions.
I remember when we had the discussion with them in the very beginning, because that was one question you did ask in the beginning.
Yeah, that was very clear.
When we had them in here, when we didn't like, want the subcontractor they hired, and they said...
We had concerns.
Correct, big concerns.
We had concerns.
For good reason. And they said that's their responsibility, they're the constructionmen, it all goes on them, so they need to finish it.
That was my recollection, but I did want to have everyone else's input before I go back to the board next month and say this is our, our position.
What is, what is the estimated cost of the repairs, because that twenty thousand is going to be used towards that?
I don't think we know. I mean, it's intended to cover those, the cost of completing things. That's, that's the intention of keeping that retainage back. It's not unusual in projects, and Brandon can speak to this on some of our larger, I think we might still have some retainage on some of the street projects for the punch lists that weren't completed yet. I don't know about, uh, Marty's Development up there, if they still got any of those things to finish up. But, I mean, that's why we keep that money back, whether it's five percent or ten percent of the project, because we know that, I think this case, twenty thousand's probably about five percent of the project that we're holding back to incentivize them to get it done. If they don't, they need to spend that money to go and get a different sub to finish those, you know, components of the project. So absolutely, you know, they're, they're acting as our representative for this, and it's their project, really. It's not really our project, it's theirs.
Okay, thank you, that was all I needed to know.
Some of the only good news is there are only twenty things on the list.
Well, I mean, overall, I mean, some of them are easier to fix than others. Um, I know that city staff has started working on some of the other parts of the building, just as long as we're talking about it, to give you a little update. Um, the parking deck staff were out there today, they're going to be doing some soil replacements so that they're able to get grass going along the buildings. Um, the parking lot itself, we've been told by SL Contracting, they should be paving this month. They're going to be paving Lions Park and the, uh, parking lot at the library, probably in the same week, I would guess, depending on the weather. They also are going to be working on the sidewalk in front of Veterans Park. Uh, we have not been able to, the local contractor that we typically have utilized does not have time. He's told us officially he's not going to do the work, so we're moving in with a different contractor. Obviously, we like to work with, uh, this local contractor as much as possible, as the council's well aware, that's our goal. But, um, so it needs to be done, that wall needs to be sealed with the sealant they have. And so that should be, I mean, by November first, all these should be done, because, you know, plants are going to close for the, by two minutes, so.
And our, our concern with the timing on the parking lot at the library, I think Pat has mentioned this to you, is that we, we saved in Scranton, got donations to get a drive-up drop box, so that our older patrons, we don't have to worry about them slipping and falling when they get out of the car in the winter time. And it's shipping out on October fifth, we're not exactly sure when the arrival date is, but it's large and cumbersome, as you might imagine, and just wanted to make sure it would be able to get in and get in.
Well, I mean, that's absolutely the goal, and I see no reason, now they've completed their soil mitigations, they had some really soft soils in that area, a lot of clays, they had to bring in a lot of gravel and backfill. I see no reason why they shouldn't be able to finish it on schedule, but, um, you know, I know Brandon and I will be touching base with Scott and with his son as much as we need to, to make sure that gets done, so.
Thank you very much.
Thanks Mel, for that statement. Okay, uh, the new business proposed amendments to chapter one, tenant of the alcoholic beverage ordinance. Tim?
Sure, uh, council, we discussed this briefly at our last meeting, I'll let you know that it was coming. Um, this is an issue where we have, uh, we have to change our, basically our fee schedule, as well as take a look at the code for this, uh, brew pub situation that we have, a new business that's coming. Right now, our code doesn't handle the brew pub itself, so, um, you could take a look at this. And, and Linda, if you wanted to broach anything with the fee schedule, you certainly can too.
No, I think Jan checked with other towns, so you do have a schedule as to what other towns chart. And, uh, she has made a suggestion. I think we could even go to, to three hundred for the small brewer and the taproom. But that would then be part of, you could set that next meeting, when we have the public hearing, for the change in the ordinance language. So if you had, if you had questions on the, on what she, what she researched for the other fees and any changes?
So the only thing we have is a small brewer off sale? Is the taproom on sale, that's already covered by the liquor license they're going to have?
That I don't know. I'd have to ask her.
I think she just wanted to get this in front of you, we're planning on the public hearing at our next meeting.
So we're not setting this tonight?
No, we're not saying it tonight, we'll have the public hearing for this, uh, we just have the resolution calling for it tonight. But she wanted to get this information in front of you with the fee schedule and also the, uh, proposed amendment. So if there are questions you have, email me, or email Linda, or you can email Jan directly, and she can get, get back to you on that.
I think the, the biggest one, and I will email this to you, but I think my biggest question is whether, like Chris was asking, so say for instance, you're looking at Roch, they've got a two fifty small brewer off-sale license, but then they've got a six hundred dollar taproom on sale, and then a fifty-one hundred dollar brew pub restaurant. I know a brew pub and a taproom are two totally different things.
Right.
But would that small brewer off-sale license be included in the taproom on-sale license? Or would someone need to have two different?
You'd have to have both.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, one covers the growlers, so, you know, one where they're going to be just filling it up and taking it away. The other would be for the sales inside the location itself.
Okay.
And then the only thing I would challenge staff on is to make it consistent with how we set our, uh, fee for the mobile businesses. How you guys did the exercise of saying, you know, so we're, the city's going to charge this fee, right? We're going to set it at two hundred dollars. Well, the fee is intended to reimburse the city for the time it takes us to do what? So if somebody has a small brewer off-sale, what's the city's staff time in a given year, that fee period? If it's an annual fee, what's the city do during that year to administer why we need that fee in the first place? So whatever the, you know, we're basically doing it to reimburse ourselves for the cost.
A question for you would be, so how do you want us to figure in the time, for example, for the police department? Because I'm sure, like, when you look at Rochester's fees, one of their justifications, I'm sure, will be they have extra enforcement related to having a restaurant bar there. So I mean, I'm, I'm certainly, we're absolutely going to take that into account. But how do you want us to take those into account, I guess?
We already budget the police officer's salary.
They would be, they'll be watching a location that's currently a car wash, that doesn't require a lot of, you know, patrol.
I would say they don't need to watch the bar.
But they'll be, they could have more calls, huh?
They could have more calls for, you know, I...
Public intoxication, whatever you would say.
Exactly, I'm just trying to think of a polite way to say it. Um, and then also, do we do spot checks to make sure that people are actually complying with ID checks and things of that nature? And is that something that the police department has to pay extra?
Well, I get it, if that's what we do, we're going to do two spot checks a year, and I don't, I mean, I don't know how we add to a fee that they might get a call. I mean, you could add a fee to everybody that buys a case of beer at the liquor store too, that somebody might call from next door and say, you're being too loud, they have to come by and do a noise complaint, because you bought a case of beer and had too many, you're too loud in your driveway. I don't think we're going to add that to the fee schedule.
Sure, no, I'm just, I'm just asking because, you know, you're right, I want to be accurate when we put this together for what we're including in it. You know, is there something we'd want to count for that or not? Because I'm, I mean, you can see the fees and it varies quite a bit.
Right.
You know, you've got, uh, between, uh, you know, Blue Earth at five hundred and Winona at, for a tap on sale is eleven fifty-five. I mean, it's huge, thousand-dollar variation between communities. Now, Winona, college town, a little bit bigger, probably a little bit more active police department, I would imagine. But at the same time, it's a little hard for us to quantify when we're basically going off of the range, and that's kind of what we've done in the past, but, um, so that's just my question, would be that.
Yeah, no, I, use your best judgment.
Okay.
I mean, I just want to be able to justify if somebody comes in and says, hey, I'm paying this fee, what am I getting for? I ask that question every year as a landlord, I pay that rental fee that the police department has for whatever the housing thing is, and I've asked the question for thirteen years, and I still have never gotten an answer, what do I get for paying that fee? Nothing.
Well, so what I'll do is, Linda and I will sit down with Jan, and if there are other questions, please send them too. But we'll take a look and see if we can get a breakdown, and at least we can show you what we're thinking.
Yep, no, it'll be good.
Why we were setting the fee where it's...
That's all I wanted to have. Yep, perfect, thank you. Okay, so we'll have that, and then I will entertain a motion to call the public hearing for September twenty-eighth regarding ordinance one-ten.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks Mel, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, public hearing set for the twenty-eighth. Onto the administrator's report.
All right, uh, just a few things to highlight, and there, you've got the statewide changes to valuation. So this is something to be keeping in mind, um, you know, we talk about the levy. There's always two things that come up whenever we do our levies or whenever people get their property tax statement, it's the valuation and it's the levy. So for someone, we may end up doing a levy where there's no net effect to the property tax for a person, however the valuation. Uh, the state's told us that, uh, on average in the state, residential homesteads going up seventeen point one percent, apartments nine point three, agricultural twelve point three, seasonal twenty-five, which is, can hit those folks up north really hard. Uh, commercials two point seven, industrials eleven point five, so those are just averages, Cassin will be a little different, of course. But, for example, I know my, my property taxes at my house, you know, valuation's going to be going up twenty-five percent. So even if my value, you know, even if the tax rate is affected, it's still going to increase. So just so something when people ask you about it, we don't have any into evaluations, the state has a formula, the county assessor has to follow that within a certain range, um, so just wanted to highlight that. Uh, we talked about planning and zoning a little bit. Fire relief pensions, uh, so this is something, um, I had a meeting with the folks from the fire relief, representatives from them. They're going to be doing a couple of different things with their portfolio, they're looking at switching their investment. Currently, they're with Par McKnight, um, they've met with them, they're not entirely satisfied with the performance of that portfolio, so they are looking at moving to the state pension. so they are looking at moving to the state pension system. However, they would still be, they would still be directing, it wouldn't be like a parapension, like some fire departments go with, but, so, I recommend that they take a look at that because it is dramatically lower in the fees, it would help their performance. The other thing, they have asked me to let you know that they are looking at coming to the council with a request in October for increasing their per-year fire relief pension, the amount they get per year. Currently, it's $2,400 a year is what they do, and that's slated out over a liability it's created each year that they have a firefight around the department. So there's a formula they follow. I have advised them that I think that treating it like an actual pension is the way to go, that they should be looking at regular increases at a lower level on a regular basis. For example, like what someone who's on social security or something would be seeing, you know, a pension has a COLA every year, and that would be my suggestion to them for how they should look for increases, but I don't know what that number will be. It will increase the liability. The concern always with this is that the city council is required to pay into this pension system if at a point in time they become less than 100% funded. So when we increase the liability by increasing the pension amount per year, we increase the chances of a portfolio, for example, 2021 is a good year, this year's probably relatively flat to poor. If you have a 2008 kind of happen again where the portfolio loses 30% or 40% of its value, the city council in one year will be required to pay in, it could be a substantial amount of money. Currently, their liability is like $380,000. Their pension amount is, they're at 506, I think is what the number I got from them. So it's relatively well-funded right now. I've also guided them that I think increasing it, you know, you need to be a certain percentage funded before we even entertain an increase, whether that's 105% or 110% or 115% funded, just to protect yourself or the portfolio. So I don't want to belabor this, but just to let you know that they will be coming and they'll be looking at that and asking for that later this year. We've gone through the budget there. EDA, we had our first business spotlight this month, it was KMTL. They let us know that they're, they're doing a lot of different things. John Emke was here and he gave a good presentation about their goals and their staffing adds, they're looking at adding some additional staff, and they're continuing to grow their business. They're looking at especially adding in the west, between west of Rochester, kind of in Salem Township over that way, getting some nice fiber optic for Brandon there, so he'll be happy about that. Hopefully, they're hoping to get some grants for that. They also entertained an offer from Jill Bonhus to purchase some EDA-owned lots on Main Street, so we're hoping to work with her for a new business there, pedals to metals. And then, they also approved a loan for Crop Science Incorporated, which is acquiring the concrete plant site. So that loan is primarily to help them clean up that site, so we're very, very happy to see that. Also wanted to highlight that there is a groundbreaking for the new Casson Park Place apartment complex tomorrow, or actually, it's Friday, sorry, at 10:00 a.m. So if you're able to be there, certainly let me know and we can get you a golden shovel and a hard hat. The work out there is coming out fast, they've already got the garage concrete poured for the foundations for that, so. I think, then I have one other thing in this packet here to take a look at, and that is from MMUA. MMUA is the Minnesota Municipal Utilities Association, we're a member of. There are some substantial changes coming to their programming. Currently, we participated in sort of a Level 2. They're looking at changing completely the way they fund this and how they, they charge it off. So I just wanted to have a little council review. What we're looking at is, and I sat down with, with Jan, who's on our safety committee, and talked to her a little about the changes there. They're looking at about 18% increase if we stay at the current level that we're at, so it's a very substantial increase to the baseline for us. So what we're looking at is going to, one day per month, of service. So we would have all our safety training one day per month. Currently, there's sort of a one and a half days per month where we have the public utilities deal with them, the safety trainer for a full day, and then he comes over to City Hall and he does a couple of hours of training here and then he does his paperwork pretty much the rest of the time. So certainly, he's here and he's done a good job, but we felt like we wanted to try it at this level. If we need to increase in the future, we can do that, but just wanted to highlight and let you know that that's what we're looking at, is that Tier 2 will be in the competence program still, we'd be 12 days a year. And then, if we do need to have other trainings added, we can purchase those on a per-training basis, basically purchase days. So it still would be more cost-effective for us than, than going with that two days a month. So, just wanted to let you know that's kind of where that is, and that that may be a small budget savings for us as well next year possibly, so. Any questions, anyone has?
Thanks Tim.
Thank you, appreciate it.
On to the engineers' report, project updates.
All right, thank you mayor and council. It's been a busy city here this summer, but it's going to get a little busier, so figured I'd give you a quick update on all of our construction projects and then field any questions. I'll just quickly go through them, if you've got any questions, let me know. On the private side, Comet Acres out on 16th Street, they're wrapping that up, that's been paved, sort of finalizing some of their ponds, that's going to be open and lots available out there. Same thing with Casson Meadows, the mayor's going to get some neighbors up there in Casson Meadows behind the athletic field, so that's going to be moving forward here in the next couple of weeks. Tim mentioned Vale and the apartment complex over by our CHS tower. Our city project's going to be starting in October as part of our utility extension to serve that apartment, so that's going to be moving forward. We mentioned earlier, the library and Lions Park, that's going to be paved soon, so that's going to be wrapping up. I think they poured the last of the concrete today, so it's going to be paved here shortly. 57, as we all know, is kind of working on the north end by the fairgrounds. Had a pretty successful time, I think, with the big iron and the fairs, kind of worked out pretty well, so obviously it's somewhat of an inconvenience to our citizens, but I think it's worked pretty well. And I was asked a question today about what's going to happen during the winter. Again, that's going to be opened up this fall, the roadway detour will be off, and then we'll close it down in the spring and do the two roundabouts down in the downtown area next spring, so that's still the schedule, and that's going to be completed in July. July 1 is that completion date, so hopefully lighten off some fireworks in 4th of July and we get that thing open back up, so. Safehouse School, that's all the trails kind of around our school complex. I had a pre-con with that, project with the school and staff and the contractor, that's going to be starting soon. There was some talk of the 5th Avenue and 16th Street intersection, that's obviously a pretty critical intersection of our high school, so I think we're going to have to pump that work off till next year, just with the detour, and we were planning on doing that during the school year this year. Contractor never got there and hear the school's open, so talking it through their final, just pumping that work off till next year, because I really don't want to have that intersection tore open when we got school traffic, so. That's the plan there, so just be looking out for that. Water tower is starting to be constructed. Again, we're going to get that thing put up, but we are not going to paint it until spring and put the water, water in that, so if you get asked about that, why it's kind of sad, that's, that's a schedule that we, we ultimately adjusted when we were bidding the project due to some availability contractors, so. 16th Street Roundabout, we're finalizing our stuff with MinDOT. We've been working with QuickTrip, obviously, the approvals tonight, we've coordinated all of our access, so we're good there. I will be circling back with a couple of property owners on the access up there on the adjacent property, but that is going to be moving forward. Excel's going to be moving their power poles in November, so we've got a final agreement with them, or semi-final agreement, if you will. So they're going to be doing work up there with relocating the power lines, and then we'll be right away in the spring, the same time that the 57 shuts back down, we're going to be building that roundabout, so. We've got some approvals at the schools, we're doing a final review with them also, so that's moving forward. County's got a couple of projects going on, you might see, off the dump road, south of the landfill, they're doing a cover project as they close down that landfill, so they're going to be taking some of that material where that pond's going to go for our 16th Street, they're going to be taking some material and putting it up on the landfill, so just to be see some activity, that's what that's going on in that area. And they are actually going to build a reuse facility, I think it's part of Habitat for Humanity, south of the landfill. That's going to happen next year, so they're kind of prepping for some of that work, so. It'll be kind of cool, open a couple of days a week, and I think my understanding is, if you're doing a demo or anything, you can take some material there, and I think they'll bring it to Habitat for Humanity, so keep more of our municipal landfill, you know,